I call the council meeting. So first thing is the roll call. And so we are joined by a council member Martinez, council members Schultz, council member or Mayor Potem McFerrin, council member Dominguez and council member Prazing. The first order is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. It's their discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the agenda is approved. Item number three, approval of the consent agenda, which includes the city council minutes from July fifteen, two thousand twenty-five, and the city clerk slash treasures report for February. Is there a motion to approve? Most of you go through. Is it in there? It's been moved and seconded. It's their discussion.
Yes, um, I had earlier inquired with the city clerk covered about, I had some questions on the treasures report and she did respond and I just wanted to know if you could just explain that because I had questions about the minus, minus in financial situations worries me.
Yep, so that is what you're looking at. It's February itself. That is not including any of your budget amendments, any of your year-end transfers, any of that information. Right now, what you're looking at is what has hit up to that current thing.
Okay, so, so it's just basically working through the new system.
So it looked that way in nine as well.
Okay.
It's just the way that it shows on there. You see the negative instead of the CR and positive balances.
Okay.
Um, and I did talk to Lee and that's something I would like to sit down with the finance committee so that you guys can kind of get an understanding of what the new financial software looks like.
Oh.
Um, but at the end, you'll notice that if you go back and look at the other ones, it's continually changing. And then at the end of the year, you'll see all that come together.
Yeah, with the transfers.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on that?
Yeah, are there any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, all those in favor, the least, yeah, consent vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the consent agenda is approved. Next up, we are very honored to have an addition to our police force. Excellent candidate has been hired and so we are swearing in Jorge Perez Adams tonight to be a member of the police department. Since we have the flags back here and probably Brittany is going to take a photo of that, why don't we have a battle? So that we're one of the kind of pieces. So Officer Perez Adams, would you raise your right hand? Would you repeat after me? I Jorge Perez Adams do solemnly swear. I Jorge Perez Adams do solemn swear that I will support the constitution of the United States, that I support the constitution of the United States and the constitution of the state of Iowa. The constitution of the state of Iowa. And that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my abilities. I will faithfully and partially, to the best of my ability, discharge all duties as police officer. Discharge all duties as police officer. For the city of West Liberty, Iowa. For the city of West Liberty, Iowa. As now and hereafter required by law. As now and hereafter required by law. Congratulations. I'm going to go officer and your chief. Bless them. We're not going to hear anything anymore, Kara.
Whoever wants. Three, two, one. Three, two, one.
Okay.
Mary, did you allow that same like?
Oh, yeah, we have family here. Uh, yeah, they weren't able to make it.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, we don't want to include, yeah. Thanks. All right, next up is item number five, employee recognition, service years. Adam Reinhardt has been with the city of West Liberty for twenty years. I had a box once that said two things that I've remembered through the years. The, I, I'll just repeat one of them that he said to me. But that is that he said that luck has a lot to do with where we end up with employment. It's then our job to make ourselves indispensable. So Adam here does incredible work for the city of West Liberty and has and is a very dedicated public employee. So we are honored tonight to say congratulations for these twenty years with the city of West Liberty and we'll look for many more within the city. Again, I invite all the council to come up and join us.
Come on up.
You have, you have that one here, so.
Oh, I'm taking that one. Kara, you can't find. I can see you. Doesn't count. All right, three, two, one. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, thanks so much. Yes.
Oh, you guys want a picture? You have no pictures in your job.
Oh, wow, I'm shocked. Did you smile? That's probably on purpose. Because of this many years.
On many more things, I'm sure.
Okay.
We are dedicated.
Yeah.
Very valuable.
Yes. All right, next up is item number six. It is a public hearing and it is to open a public hearing on a budget amendment. Number one, the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion of hold public hearings.
Okay, is there a second? Second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, it is a roll call vote and the clerk will call the roll.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Prazing?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, we are now in public hearing and we'll call on the public for any comments and or correspondence. Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? Are there any public comment? All right, based on that, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion close.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Prazing?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Then we are to item seven, reports and first up is.
Don't we need to have the resolution?
Where are my manners?
It's right.
Is there a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-five-zero-five hyphen-two-seven-three?
Motion to go ahead with the resolution, so said.
Is there a second?
Second.
And is there discussion?
Mr. Mary, just find out the description of the explanation changes is located on the budget amendment sheet and go to our.
Yes. All right, hearing no other discussion, the clerk will call the roll.
Dominguez?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Prazing?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
So after a false alarm, we will turn to our city engineer for his report. That works.
All right, uh, happy to be here tonight. Thank you for having me. The first thing that I'd like to talk with you all about is we've been meeting with different departments with the city over the last month. Last month, we were able to meet with the wastewater staff, the electric staff and the water department. I'll provide a more detailed report at the next meeting outlining kind of the things that we did, but we had very good walkthroughs and discussions with each of them. The electric department will be more as an as-needed basis because they're going to continue working with, I think it's DHMG that they're currently working with, but as needed. And then we're going to point them in some directions for natural gas because that's something that's outside of our capabilities, but to get them some help on that. So we're, we're working with our partners to get someone or a couple of references for them to reach out to for, for that aspect. Um, the next thing, um, the water department had a very good walkthrough. We were able to go through that well that you're pumping out. We did some testing on it. You're not going to have to continually pump it. There is going to have to be some pumping so that the water doesn't get stagnant in that well. However, um, we're going to have them do some base slice, baseline testing on each one of those wells just to understand what they're sending from each well. And then we're able to better predict what that well, how it will react with the RO system that they're, they're sending it to. So, um, I'll have a more detailed report, but I know Austin and Edgar were both reaching out to the lab to get the sample bottles ready, to get those samples collected. And then we were going to review that and hand it over to them. The other aspect that we're working with them on is getting the aerator inspected, which will, the airation, the aerator inspection will be at no cost to the city. And then doing a core sample of the filter media for your filters and that will be five hundred dollars to do the core sample. So, um, the contract, it's a contractor that we work with all the time. We were just going to have them bill us that five hundred dollars and then we were just going to send that as part of the invoice to the city that have that. So, um, but I expect that to take place sometime this month. I'm trying to work out a schedule, um, with the contractor and Rural Water. Rural Water is going to show up on site to help the city get the, the hatch access. And there's a ton of bolts on it and Edgar and Austin haven't done that before, so they want a little bit of help. Um, and that was one of the things the contractor had asked if they could have that unbolted and open by the time they get there to do the inspection. So I'm trying to coordinate a time with Rural Water and the contractor that will work to be there on site to be able.
Is this well number two?
No, this is, this is, well, number two is where we're, we're getting samples on well number two, well number three and well number four. Um, and that's just to get a baseline on all of them to make sure that we're sending a consistent flow to it. With, for this is, this is the aerator and, and the gravity filter. So set about, I'm just going to use rough numbers right now. A portion of the flow goes through the RO member or the RO system. You don't want to send your RO treated water out to the distribution because it's very unstable and corrosive water. So they actually send a portion through a gravity filter system and that goes through an aerator. And that hasn't been inspected since it's been installed. We're going to get, I don't anticipate much with the aerator. There might be a couple replay or a couple of maintenance items, but I don't expect it to be very much. Um, and then with the core sample of the media, just to kind of get an idea of how much life it has left with it. Usually you expect media the last ten to fifteen years. We've seen instances, especially when you're only sending about twenty to thirty percent through it, um, it lasts a lot longer just because you're not sending the full amount of water through that filter. I don't anticipate much, but it will give good information on how much life that's left. So the city can properly budget when that time comes to be able to remove and replace that, that media. So for five hundred dollars, it's a pretty simple, uh, proactive approach from a maintenance standpoint. Um, and then the chlorine room, uh, they're down to one chlorine, uh, portion of the system. They're working with their chemical supplier Hawkins to provide a quote that they're going to replace everything in there, the gas monitoring system and everything. They're working on getting a quote from that. We're going to review. It's not something that needs to be permitted. We just want to make sure that they're meeting code and everything looks appropriate. And then they're, they're going to bring that to council when, when they get that all completed. I don't know what that cost will be. So I, I would give you an indication if I knew, but I, I, I don't know what that would be at this time. Um, and then, uh, for the wastewater side, we had a good visit with them last month, uh, just really to introduce ourselves to Craig and, and Jerry and, uh,
and, and sorry, yeah, I had to think of the name. I know them all, but
uh, and had a good discussion with them, walked through the plan. They're going to continue with phase one with B and K to get through that project. And then, uh, with their new N P D S permit that came out, they had a phenols, um, compliance schedule. We're going to work with doing a sampling plan with them for that to understand if, if it's real and then help identify some sources because that's not something typically done. It usually comes out of a cleaner of, of some sort. So um, we're going to work with the staff to identify some potential sources and do some sampling there and see if it's something that we need to have a conversation with, with one of the constituents in town, whether it's an industry or or something, our commercial business. We just want to make sure that the city is protected there and not having to add additional treatment. And a lot of times in our experience, it's more of a cleaner and you just switch out cleaners and you're fine there. So. Um, and then, uh, we're going to start working with them, are doing some planning for moving forward with phase two, but that's, that's a little ways down the road yet. So they need to get through phase one, but just start talking through what's going to be included as part of that project. Um, the next thing that we're going to talk, we met with Adam and the public work staff to go over East Sixth Street. Uh, that's the, that was the first project on the capital improvement plan. We met with them to go over the scope. I wanted to hand out our cost estimate, which actually came in line with the, pretty close to what you had in the C I P budget is for.
Works. First.
And then we put together a scope, kind of a rough scope on the plan just to kind of go through everything with them, um, make sure we were accurate on the scope and wanted to talk through that. For the project. And just still happens, this was actually the side of the street that I grew up on, so I know this very well.
Buffalo, Swissville, St. Louis.
Yeah, you grew up on it too. So the scope of the project is really a full reconstruction from Columbus Street down to the dead end right before Corn Street. Um, what that entails is widening the street. Um, in that meeting, we decided to go twenty-nine feet wide. Um, originally, I think it was proposed to go thirty-one, but matching the rest of the streets that you have in town, even the newly are constructed streets, it's all twenty-nine, so match what the city's been doing. Twenty-nine will meet the goal of the city and you'll save a little bit of money in the long run with it. Replacing the sidewalks on.
How, how, how wide are they now?
Oh, I don't know that off the top of my head. Um, from Miller Street to, to Columbus, the brick section, that's probably a little less than twenty-nine feet, probably twenty-seven feet roughly. And then when you get down to, um, south or east of Miller Street, it narrows down pretty, pretty badly. And I think it's around twenty to twenty-two feet. So. Yeah, I think it's about a ten-foot length is all you have there, um, which is really narrow. So going to twenty-nine feet will allow you to have parking on, on the side street. And then, um, if you have two cars coming, they'll just have to alternate like most side streets that you have there. So. And then we're going to design it such that if in the future or later on in this project, if you wanted to, we could always connect it to Corn Street. But right now that's not included as part of the scope, but we're going to design it such that you're able to make that transition in the future if, if you would like to. This includes replacing the sewer from Clark Street to the dead end, um, of Corn Street and then also replacing the water main from Corn Street all the way to Spencer Street because all the rest of the water main along Sixth Street has been replaced. So it was the site or the city asked that they include in the cost estimate to go across the highway six there and then, uh, connect to the new segment that's at Spencer Street along Sixth Street. Um, just to get that entire street of new water, um, currently. I think we're, we're just planning on doing eight-inch water main there. It could go down to six inch, but really the cost between eight inch and six inches insignificant because really you're only paying for the difference in size and pipe installation cost will be the same and the difference in cost between eight inch and six inch pipe is relatively minimal. So, um, what we came up for construction and that we're including twenty-five percent of energy at this time just because of the unknowns. This is a very high level. Doing street view, um, through Google, going through it, looking at city, uh, G I S to understand where everything was. Talk, we talked through it with them and we came out at a construction cost of two million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Um, a hundred and, or two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, a hundred and thirty dollars. And then, um, below I have what the anticipated engineering fees would be, um, a hundred and seventy for design and two hundred and four thousand for, uh, construction services associated with that for a total project cost of two point six four two million dollars. Um, and that was within, I think, thirty thousand dollars or thirty or forty thousand dollars of what the C I P showed, even adding in that extra block of water main that wasn't anticipated. This, this would also include replacing the, the storm sewer down at, at Clark Street. Um, and then also the services along that stretch. Uh, sewer services will only be from East Clark Street East because the sewer is in the alleyways west of there.
Yeah.
And then water would be of course to the curb stop for each one of them. Um, and then if we do encounter any lead service lines, uh, the water department's going to be getting us that information for any lead in that area. And then we would work with the city to figure out how we want to approach that after the curb stop to get that replaced at that time all works going on.
Yeah.
Yep, through our, through our, kind of our construction, um, we identified that because of the, the land project that we know we come across it, um, and their team are really good and you know, thought want to make sure what we need to do and for replacement and work with.
And, and one of the things that we will be doing is, um, I, I hadn't mentioned that, but S R F, state revolving, um, bond through the state has programs out there for lead service lines. So we're, after we get through that with the, the water team, we're going to go, or the water staff, we're going to go through and see if there's a, a potential project there to get funding for that through the state. Um, right now, uh, not determined yet, but we have worked with other communities and, and, and applied for. It's still too early if they've been awarded anything yet or not, because that was just this last quarter. So the news hasn't come out for that, but um, it's something that not all communities are taking advantage of and we want to make sure that communities are taking advantage of it because it's funds there that are available for communities to use. So just wanted to talk through this, see if you had any questions regarding.
Counsel, any comments?
Well, so when the resident, when we're doing those projects, um, I'm assuming, because I remember when they redid my vaccine as well, that there's a plan for supporting residents and things like that to get access to their homes. But when they were doing mine, there was literally, I had to go through a little alley and then trudge through between houses to get to my front door. Like, what does that look like for residents?
Um, that's something we'll have to work with. Along this stretch, there's a lot of alleys behind, we're behind. So there's going to be a lot of access points that route. And then sometimes we work, if there's elderly or, or, or things like that along the stretch and they, we, they don't have access, there's going to be staging such that they're able to access their property, uh, if they're not paving or, or excavating at that time. So we're going to phase it such that it's going to be really one block close off at a time.
I think that's what I was wondering.
But the other thing that we'll do is we'll go through, when we start moving forward and in the design of this, as we get a little further and a little more information is figured out, we'll actually go out and have a town hall meeting along with residents along that to give them the opportunity to ask questions and, and talk through that. For elderly, a lot of times if they have to park down at Clark or Miller Street to get access, we'll work with the contractor to have, to have like a golf cart or something, a ca- carrier transport to take them to their properties to help out that way. For trash pickup and everything, we have the contractor manage that and, and uh, the residents will bring it up to the front and then the contractor is responsible to getting it to access for trash pickup and everything, and then bringing the bins back to each one of those properties. Those are things we'll work through. And then, um, one of the things, my coworker's name will be on it because he volunteered himself, but we're going to have door hangers, um, for phasing of the project. I need to get a kick out of that. So, um, just the, and then we're going to give weekly or bi-weekly updates to the city. So you can post that on your website, different aspects like that, social media, whatever that may be, just to communicate with the public on what's taking place. So we've found that's a lot more successful than just kind of catching them off guard and saying your street's going to be closed off and, and deal with it. So.
Yeah, it's, I believe I S U too, they, they did, and that's a good question. And they did a job addressing that with our staff because, um, you know, historically we've seen that lack of communication and we addressed that right away early on that, you know, we'd want to make sure, but town hall meetings and postings and having and so again, I know Adam and, um, the staff of them were going to put them in.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
It's approach that we've taken, have, have had good, this, our success with. I'm not going to say that there aren't going to be any hard times through a project because it's a construction project. There's always going to be some stumble along the way. Um, but really our, our approach there is just communicate and then figure out the solutions. Don't come with you to it with a problem, try and figure out the, some solutions for you to kind of look through when we get to that point. But, um, a lot of times we put our numbers on there and then we're the ones getting the call to save the public staff, some city staff, some, some headaches too. So that always helps out.
My experience is that delays are the biggest problem when we have to take something like this.
Yeah, as long as we don't have the rain that we had this year, we'll, we'll be okay. But, um, yeah, I know. And if there are delays, we like to communicate that and then come up with, work with the contractor to figure out solutions to help with those delays. So, um, unfortunately, uh, with this one not being state funded, it's locally funded, we won't run into as many delays because we don't have to procure just through the U S. Well, it will be more open that way. So, um, and also though, when you're having Babar A I S, it increases the project costs to a certain extent too, because products made in America are more expensive than foreign made. I hate to say it. So, uh, but, uh, luckily we've worked with a lot of contractors in this area. So, um, we feel confident as long as we get the right contractor. And even if it's one that the city might have some, uh, concerns with, we'll work through that and address those right in the very beginning with the contractor. Um, because unfortunately it's a public bid, so you have to award it a little bit unless you have really good justification to not award to the little bit because you can, for a project of this size, I can tell you if you're planning on going that route, expect a lawsuit. Um, whether you're justified, if you're justified, just expect that contractor is going to fight it. Um, it, this is a big enough project where contractors will, will take action in that regard. So. Um, luckily I haven't had to go through that yet. So, and I've been doing it for, for fifteen years or so. So.
It's not been a stress.
Yeah, so.
Are there other questions from the council or comments from the council?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Uh, I had a few items I wanted to highlight. Um, first of all, you mentioned the roadway is going to be twenty-nine inches wide.
Twenty-nine feet.
Or twenty-nine feet.
Yeah.
Feet, feet. Um, I just wanted to make sure that that is definitely going to be appropriate because I know we've had instances in the past where it hasn't been the case and we've run into issues, especially if people are parking with like emergency vehicles going down, you know, the roadway or it, you know, turning around or whatever. So I want to make sure that the twenty-nine inches, if we have to look at parking or parking only on one side, I don't know what the specific details are for that road, which we don't have to figure out right now. But I just wanted to make sure that that was in mind. Um, and then, um, I know that you're going to be replacing waterline.
Yes.
So I want to make sure that in conjunction with the uh, notification of the construction project for all those residents.
Yes.
That it is essential that there are notices, letters that go out specifically for the construction and the fact that they may have to replace lead lines.
Yes.
So I wanted to make, make sure that that is definitely going to happen because, um, I don't want any misunderstandings.
Yeah, yeah. When we, when we get that list put together, um, we'll actually send out letter, we'll work with the city to send out letters to those direct residents. Because we're, we're anticipating to have most of that information upfront, even if we don't, if we encounter one that we thought wasn't led, but it ends up being led, we'll work, we'll make sure that they're, they're notified. Well, we'll probably type, I'll send our, our inspection guy will send us a note in the office and say, hey, can you get a, a letter put together and they'll go hang that on the, the door or, or knock. If they're not there, they'll hang it on the door just so they're notified on that. And then there's going to be instances where, um, I don't know the answer to this right now, but as we're replacing the water main, um, there could be potentials where we have to shut off a, a segment of water main. The residents will make sure that there's um, sufficient notice so they're aware of that, um, during those times. So those are things we'll work through, um, the schedule.
Yeah, I was going to say, a lot of times those are things that we can communicate by having that town hall meeting. Or, um, and those are, and again, for the width of the street, um, I mean, there's not a whole lot, you know, we get wider too. We're taking away from um, a lot of those front lawn properties. And so, I mean, this was a big compromise to at least give it some, a little bit more, but not go too much, um, because then it takes away from, um, the sidewalk, it takes away from their front and that gets into a whole other commerce.
From um the sidewalk, it takes away from their front and that gets into a whole nother conversation, so and I think we we talked about. One side part.
One side of the street, so they're kinda outlined that for you, you typically need seven and a half feet for side street parking. And then you'd have roughly eleven to twelve feet length still left over for for that, so.
Didn't wanna run into the.
It's a good question.
Future because we have had this come up.
Yep, and and. No, that's that's a very good question and we'll make sure when we decide that 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 we'll talk through that with the council um. And then there will be the appropriate signage for no parking on one side if that's the case um. And then the other thing that we can do uh is with our software that we use to design it, we can always, if you wanna sense of. Just uh put this or I guess. Relief in that regard, uh we can run that model where we can have a fire truck go through that with a car parked there and have an oncoming car just to show that. You're able to fit all that throughout one time, hopefully the person who's on the other side and we all know drivers aren't only that. Don't always pay attention to emergency vehicle, so I mean, it it's really case by case, but. Hopefully that person, you know, would would stop and let the the emergency vehicle go through, but we all know, we've all been in those situations where you see people do erratic things.
Do you have um just a just a roundabout guess on the ETA for the timeline and?
So, so the next step would be is we we send the we at the next council meeting, we'll have a contract.
Okay.
Um to move forward with this project, we work on design this year and then bid it uh next uh probably February. Uh March timeframe and then it would start next spring, um or depending on when it's in the city budget, we may have to time it around that.
Yep, um so um we. And just kinda add to that, so the timeline and enter into the contract. And then that timeline, our timeline starts because we also have to find financing into that timeline and um Nate. Uh Summers with U M B has been already working and we've already been providing him information from a bonding perspective, so um. So again, I mean, that keeps us progressing along, so and ideally construction towards late spring maybe.
Yeah, late spring, probably April, May would be what I'd expect um. And then hopefully it would be completed next year, like I said, if we don't get the the rain that we got this year, that's always gonna be a factor, but. Um it's it's three, four blocks of road, maybe five uh when you out the dead end, uh but. At the end of the day, it's it shouldn't be one construction season, construction season as long as we don't run into a ton of issues, so.
And the big part of it is is trying to um also because of that area, there's heavy traffic with um during school. So that was one thing we talked about too as far as the timing. Um is the impact of all the traffic on six, seventh and eighth from the from the middle school, so.
And we can always schedule it such that we can phase it, that they'll have that part open by the time school starts, so. Really, it would be Clark and Miller Street intersections is what you want to open during that time um just.
I think it would also make sense to see what it would be if we connected Corn Street. Cuz I'm just thinking about our other project, how important it is for walkability and to connect.
Yep.
Um I don't know if we own that land or not, maybe that.
You do have the right away.
We have a right away, but yeah, but that's been, I mean, there's been some more, I just, we haven't touched base yet, but there's been some more conversation pertaining to that and. Farmers Lane that's occurred in 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 the past month, but we haven't touched, I haven't. Had a chance to touch base with them on that, so. Cuz that was our conversation if we're bonding, um you know, since we're going out to bond and that was why, you know, with the sensor, the water means. You know, see how much work we've been tying in that bond and um. And again, we can circle back around and and have them just provide us uh another. Uh estimate to include Corn Street, so we've got those options in there, but or phase it, we could do a phase press, so.
No, I agree, the only thing that I can think of and just wanna make you aware of is the people that live down there are probably gonna have some. Concerns with it cuz it's gonna become the thorough way to the ball fields down there, Sixth Street, I growing up on that street, I always wondered why it was never connected, to be quite honest, so. Um.
Well, we have people like trudging down that little cliff, you know, because they they especially. People who are out of town that that don't know that it doesn't connect, um yeah, there. I think it's it's due, you know.
No, it does make it hard when with trap, cuz there's not really a good way to do like a. Uh we call it a bulb on the end of it, it's almost like a small roundabout or small cul-de-sac for emergency vehicles to turn around, but. There's not enough room down there to do that, and the other thing we do that like a. We call it a hammerhead or it's just kind of a T-shaped gravel, so they can turn around, but there's still not a ton of room to do that, and with the grade, it makes it hard, so. It wouldn't be a lot of cost because really you'd only be extending the street, I think, twenty.
Just get onto the road.
Yeah, so. Oh, and then we might replace that inception of corn to make it tie in nice and then it whenever you do the work for Corn Street down there, you would have a nice. Segment to tie on to. Um and then the other thing that we have to, we still have more discussion on is that. The pipe on the water main on Corn Streets uh trains it, which is obsessive cement. Right, so you have to be careful with uh tying into that with the dust of particles that would come off of it, but um. Contractors, as long as we call it out and have it specified right, they'll have the proper precautions there, it just makes tying into it a little more tricky.
Other questions or comments from the council?
Uh I guess my other question is to down by Commerce Street. Yeah, I don't know where we're gonna be at next year with the housing addition or the housing division.
That's a more conversation that we have to get into because we had a meeting with the developers and so there was some conversation had. About um again, with Farmer's Lane and and that section and then on multi-purpose. A trail um on the developer as kind of there, yeah, but we not had an opportunity to touch base on those. Um so again, we can, when we get a chance to have that meeting, then I can provide that information for them.
Oh, we're aware of the development, just haven't.
Yeah, yeah, they have that. They haven't provided a preliminary plat yet and um so that's kinda where it's difficult for us to go into. Much more conversations until we actually get a preliminary plat um submitted and it goes through all the planning and zoning processes.
Right, so two final comments um then on your report.
Yeah.
Thank you for a very thorough report and welcome home.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you, I'm excited. One of these days I'll get my nerves out of me.
Didn't even notice, yeah.
All right, so we move on to the city manager's report. Was mailed out to us.
They did print it, um the printed one is in front of you and I apologize on the delay. Um the only only change I had in my eye, I had the wrong date for our P G I meeting. Um the mayor helped me with that, it's August sixth.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, so and. And the city will stay consistent with our previous, so um no. And I had a conversation with Cody today and there's just some more information first to collect and then we're gonna. Um arrange to have him come back and address council on on some of that information that we talked about with the lines. I mean, there's there's a lot lot going on.
Yes.
Other questions or leave about the the report?
Hey, you don't have the faith to reach out, set a meeting with me, um go in and we can walk through it, um yeah.
All right, um committee meetings, I'm not aware of any um. Council member Parizic and I will be part of the uh new fire agency meeting that will be held on August eleventh. Uh at six thirty at the fire station, so um those are open meetings and anyone can attend those as well. All right, uh we will move on to item eight, A vendor voucher claim list in the amount of four hundred and three thousand. One hundred thirty-three dollars and eighty-three cents, is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, it's a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye, uh those opposed nay. The ayes have it and we will move to A to be vendor voucher claim list number two for Cardinal Graphics in the amount of. Six hundred and seventy dollars, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
I just wanted to point out um the new sign uh located in front of.
Yes.
City administration building and um thank you to Cardinal um. For that, I I actually received some uh probably um comments about how nice it looks, so.
All right, there there is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye, uh those opposed nay.
I abstained.
And abstention from the mayor pro tem, we move to eight C. Library preclaimed prepaid claim list in the amount of nine thousand. Seven hundred thirty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Say.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, the ayes have it and um we will move on to item number nine. Which is the time for public comments and or correspondence, um and this is the time when people can um. Talk on issues that are not on the agenda and please state your name and address for the record. And keep your comments to no more than two minutes. I heard before council began, and I rarely do this, but uh we have a young woman in our uh community that I think. We need to take note of of what she accomplished, so monstirs will be my feligas.
Um Georgia Clark will be a ninth grader this coming year. Uh competed in the National Civics V and she is now going to Washington D C in November. She took the entire state and and kind of walloped all of them, um and so we're real proud of her, she won a thousand dollars. From um basically um. Chamber of Commerce of the state of Iowa as a collective group and she's going for a hundred thousand dollars. Um and the national uh uh college scholarship for a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I think that deserves it. Are there other public comments? Are there other public?
Yes, yes. I was gonna wait for all three, but. Jacob Lane six nineteen North Calhoun Street, right over there, director of the Chamber of Commerce, um I was unable to make it to the meeting last. Man, that was two weeks ago. Unbelievable, so I wanted to come myself and thank everyone, we had an incredible fair parade and picnic in the park. Uh we had over fifty entries in the fair parade and it was long, but the weather was. Tolerable and lots of people came out, lots of candy was thrown, the police department and Chief Hauser did a fantastic job at both of them. And for that, we're very thankful and for all the other city depart- departments that helped contributed, uh both events were. Great successes this year, I think had higher attendance than last year. The weather helped with that, but I like to say it was me too, so.
Yes.
And I wanted to throw a few reminders your way uh from the chamber and a few of the events that we have co- going on, the Art Farmers Market is still occurring every Wednesday. From four to seven uh on Spencer Street and we invite you to come down, the entire month of August, we're having a car show. We're inviting people to bring their classic cars and just park them. We also have music in the park going on those Wednesday evenings from six thirty to nine in Ron Devu Park and that's being put on by the. West Liberty Area Arts Council or W L A C, so Wednesdays during the month of August are gonna be a lot of fun, so please come. Come to the market and stay for the music. Um the art walk, the annual art walk is coming Friday, August fifteenth. Um and that's being put together more by by We Lead and um uh we and some of the downtown businesses again, but. Do come down, a lot of our downtown businesses will have artists inside of them. From all over the place, so it's a chance to go shop local and as well as see different artists. And finally, we have the Chamber Golf Outing coming out on Thursday, August twenty-eighth, and I'd just like to thank the city ahead of time for all that they've done to help. With that and their participation, so that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. Are there other public comments?
And just that I did provide the page one, but I did forward you um the chambers information is.
All right, hearing no other public comments, we'll go to uh council members for. Uh comments and correspondence, Councilmember Martinez.
Uh I don't have any.
Councilmember Schultz and um. Mayor Pro Tim McFerrin.
Just a carryover comment from Mister Archer or.
Yeah, okay.
From last week.
Yeah. Councilmember Dominguez.
Um I got a lot of comments this morning, I went to um an event at the ICE facility in Cedar Rapids to. Um help accompany a few families to their annual check-ins. Um there was probably two, three hundred people there that showed up for these families and it was. Uh humbling to see how many people come out um to. You know, help be there for these families, one, so they feel like they're not alone. And two, um it made a difference, it really, really made a difference, uh we were able to get. It wasn't just five families like the news says, it was multiple people um for several hours and we were able to. Hopefully, um it was because of the presence of the news media there because there were so many bodies there that ICE did not detain folks until people started. Dispersing, um they did detain three people unfortunately. But um there were several people and families that were able to walk back out that door um for another year. So it does make a big difference if people wanna get involved and and wanna see how they can accompany. Um those families, it happens every and so they can reach out to me um or. Through Facebook or through my city uh email account, I can get you connected to the organizers, it's 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 really just showing up. And being there for support, so. That's all I have.
Councilmember Prezic.
No, just the one that we've got, yeah.
All right, um city manager.
Probably more than those.
And city clerk. All right, we will move on to item ten, old business and ten A ordinance twenty twenty-five zero seven. One five hyphen one two, an ordinance amending the code of. This is of the city of West Liberty by amending provisions pertaining to water rates, this is the second reading. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Is there discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Prezic?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Moving to ten B ordinance twenty twenty-five zero seven one five hyphen one three. An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of West Liberty, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to sewer rates. This is the second reading, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Hold on, I do have something. Yeah, I just sounds like I saw Kara, um so on this one, uh Mayor Pro Tim McCarron had reached out because if you. Look on there, it says one, two, three, five. We will, on the next one, you will see that at the four, it's just a typo from the codification portion of it, so. Next time you will see that followed up by one, two, three, four.
Yes, yeah, I saw that earlier and that's why I reached out to question.
None of the information of the ordinance is wrong, it's just that numbering system from when it was sent through.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Prezic?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
We'll move on to item eleven, new business, eleven A. Discussion and appropriate action by the city council on the event assistance and street closure application. From the Church of Christ uh for performance uh from the medical group on September third, two thousand twenty-five. From five P M to nine P M, so first up is discussion, is there any discussion on this?
Mister Mayor and Council, the only thing I would add inside, um staff would recommend a people.
Okay. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Mister Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the event um uh as as written.
Okay, is there a second? Again, it's been moved and seconded, um and so uh. Second, it's been moved and seconded, um and so uh all in favor signify by saying aye. Uh, those opposed nay, the ayes have it, and we move to eleven B. Discussion of appropriate action by the city council of West Liberty, Iowa on the event assistance and street closure application. From the West Liberty Art, um, wh- what's the C stand for, council, thank you. Music uh in the park on August sixth through the twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-five, is there discussion?
Mister Mayor, you were provided, um Mayor Council were provided a memo in the pocket.
Yeah.
Mister Cooper provided you the event request application um being announced today.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Which one?
As, I'll second it.
Okay.
All right, uh all in favor signify by saying aye, aye, those opposed nay. The ayes have it, and we move to eleven C, resolution twenty twenty-five zero eight zero five hyphen two seven four. A resolution to approve contract for recreational and programming services with Gracie. Zeke. Um, and so insert motion, Zeiger, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Um, Mayor Council provided a memo, um if you have any questions or my cards, um and also can provide qualifications. Like this, uh Councilmember McPharren did reach out for those.
Yes. There are further discussion?
There's, oh, sorry, and um I'm assuming they've been working with Parks and Rec as well, just lowering their two.
Yeah, that's a good question, um so uh. Uh Brittany, and um we, we started with Nikki, just to collect some of the circle. Information I get input, and now our next steps, uh depending on the action with the contract is. Um, we've scheduled Gracie to come um August fifteenth and coordinate with the entire Parks and Rec staff to go over the programming. And um and continue to work through fine tuning that program um to best fit the facility. Um, what would be best for the staff managing it, would it require volunteers, so there'll be some additional conversation. But that's what she's tying into the overall cost uh was those pieces.
Are we looking for this program to um commence this year, better your idea?
Yeah, yeah, so we, we recommended to start off with an eighteen-month program, I think we, we had asked that we try to get it started in late fall. Or into at least, I think, the winter months to tie into when kids are out of school, and also from our mature community members. Um, to try to start identifying some programming for them uh once the weather changes, and then, and then move forward from there, so.
Okay, is there further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Dominguez, yes. McPharren, yes. Parizic.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Last item on the agenda is uh eleven D, exciting uh scenes from next council members uh session. And uh we'll probably, we'll be hearing more, it sounds like, from our city engineer with the projects uh going on in that regard. In addition to that, um we uh will probably have a report on the walking um tour that occurred. Two, two different groups went out today, um and so we'll have a report on that during the next council meeting as well, and. There was something else.
Well, after the third is final reading.
And the third and final reading of uh the ordinance is on sewer and water rates uh here in um the city, so. Uh, anything else?
Um, Mister Mayor, at this time, um unless staff can remind me, I do not believe we have anything. Um, established that for a work session, um so. We'll follow up as soon as possible and let you know if there's something that council specifically would like to have. Uh presented, um then let, let us know, and that'll give us time to coordinate.
Yeah, all right. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye, aye. Of those opposed?